Well, I mean, I have a picture and it says it's live. Yeah, we're live.
Alright, so now we can give our sign that on. We gotta, you gotta restart the Zoom meeting.
Are you there? Yeah. Uh, turn this on. Where is that? Okay. Join audio. Join with computer audio. Okay. Okay, I have that.
We're missing Tony.
Did Judy make it back?
Okay, we're good.
Not that I know of.
I'm here, but I still have a picture.
Alright, we hear ya. We are, it's, there's a pretty big lapse in time. Okay, slowly we return.
Yep, all's bad. Then we got Andy, Susan, Jim, Paul, and Tony. Tony, he's not Tony.
Alright Judy, we're back.
Okay, I'll see if I can get back on.
But we're not live yet, but we're, we're, you mean, yeah, we're, we're back.
We're live.
We are live as a matter of fact. We're live. Good to see everybody. We're just, there's a big lapse in time though. You gotta turn your phone down, cause you, it's, it's probably ten fifteen seconds.
Judy's, Judy's coming. And there's Jim Cott, possibly.
We do have a comment that somebody is, uh, seeing a feed from their laptop.
Yeah, I see it.
Intermediate connection.
You gotta know. My wife got hers on hers now too.
Andy, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I seen you, you, the microphone was off, now I hear you, okay.
Oh no, I just, I just mute. You don't need to hear every noise comes out of my house.
Tony.
I'm after.
Alright, now I hear ya. So, can we get this going? How are we feeling about getting started? Judy, can you hear us? Judy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can Paul, I, I kept the phone on mute, so that I'm not disrupting anything, so I put it on mute in between.
Okay, everybody can hear Judy okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Okay, I'm getting some comments, people can see us now.
Jim's good too, he's up, I seen him.
Alright, are we ready?
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the order, call to open this city of New Franklin council meeting, this Wednesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty. And I don't have the time now. Anybody help me with the time?
Six, six forty-five.
Six forty-five, thank you Kelly. I'd like, do I all stand for the pledge?
Ow!
Uh, let me get a flag shirt on. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Alright, thank you. Alright, can I get a roll call please Kelly?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of June third, twenty twenty.
Okay.
You got a second, any comments on the meet, on the minutes? Alright, roll call.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. That passes seven to zero. Like to make a motion to approve the financials for May twenty twenty, subject to audit?
Second.
You got a first and second? Roll call please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Alright, again, that passes seven to zero, thank you. We're gonna move into our public comments. I'm gonna, I'm sorry? Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do not see any comments, David.
I came up with a, had, good connect. Okay, yeah, I'm looking, I'll give it just a second here. We had a, a few that just people were watching now, and they're seeing us. Andrea's watching, thanks Andrea, for watching. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move into our, uh, agenda this evening. We have two first readings and one third on our original agenda.
David, we have one comment.
Oh, I see it now. Okay, I see it now. It just came up on me, hold on. Alright, I'll go ahead and read this one. It's, uh, the comment is, great seeing you guys and hope you're all staying healthy. My question is about the sewer project and its current status. Since we didn't have our planned meeting in January, and then things turned for the worse in March, we haven't heard anything about the project. Can you let us know if they are still working on, or have they paused the project? Paul, can you help us with that one?
Yeah, the latest on that is this, that they're doing, they're, they've finished the design work for the, uh, uh, for the stage from, uh, up Vanderhoof, from the treatment plant. Uh, and the design work, they've narrowed it for the, uh, uh, commercial corridor on, uh, Manchester Road ninety-three. Uh, they, uh, probably a year away from having all of that completed and, and being what you might call shovel-ready. Um, whether or not the shovels will go into ground a year from now are gonna depend on, uh, uh, finance and the economy. Um, the rest, the other phases of the sewer project, uh, have been, uh, as a result, pushed back. Uh, and, uh, I would say we're, you know, at best case scenario, uh, there would be sewer, come up ninety, come up Vanderhoof to ninety-three and come down ninety-three past Grace Church. Uh, that they would start that project, best case scenario, uh, next fall. Uh, and that's a twelve to eighteen month pro, uh, process. So, uh, and the balance of those, it's, uh, we're, we're years away, uh, of coming into the neighborhoods, I say that with no hesitation. Uh, we are years away from coming into the neighborhoods, uh, because they have to have public meetings and everything, so that's why we haven't had any meetings, cause there's nothing happening. Uh, when they get ready, uh, to take it to council on that commercial corridor ninety-three, there'll be, uh, the, the public meetings on those to get the consensus, but I've talked to most of those people up there and they, and they want the sewer on that commercial corridor, so that's what's up. Uh, we're probably, uh, at least a year away from the possibility of construction and, uh, two and a half years away from, uh, the sewer and that little stretch. And that probably puts us five, six, seven years away from getting into the neighborhoods, assuming they actually come into the neighborhoods.
Alright. Thanks Paul, I hope that answered your question, uh, any other comments? Give it a couple of minutes here, or a minute. You seen anything Kelly?
I have not seen any additional comments.
Alright, we're gonna move into our legislation then, again, we have two first readings, one third on our original agenda, we have a supplemental agenda with two first readings, so we'll go ahead to resolution number twenty dash R dash thirty Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police, district, and dispatch funds, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, uh, we move to waive the three readings on twenty R thirty.
Second.
We have a first and a second, uh, res-.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Oh, he was.
Andy.
Kelly.
Andy.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty R thirty.
Second.
You got a second, has Andrea a second? Any, uh, further discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman? Mr. Hawke? Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Everybody? Alright, that passes seven zero, thank you, we'll move to resolution twenty dash R dash thirty-one.
A resolution affirming that funds provided by the county coronavirus relief distribution fund be expended consistent with the requirements of section five zero zero one of the coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security act, the CARES Act, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution has been assigned to the finance committee, we move to waive the three readings on twenty R thirty-one.
Second.
You got a second Kelly? Yes. Andy?
Yep.
Alright. First, second, roll call please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes. We move to adopt resolution twenty R thirty-one.
Second.
You have a first and a second? Any further discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero, we're gonna stay with our original agenda, which has no second readings, but our third reading of resolution number twenty dash R dash twenty-eight Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to apply for a Bureau of Justice Assistance Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Policy and Implementation BJA BW CPIP Grant for the purchase of six body cameras and travel expenditures for one officer to attend one national meeting, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, we move to adopt resolution twenty R twenty-eight.
Second.
Can I make a comment?
First and second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes sir.
Uh, listen, I got, uh, you know, a little testy with Jim, he asked a couple of questions I didn't have the answers to, I'm gonna apologize for that. Uh, I think I was more, uh, upset that I didn't have the answers than I was at the timing of the questions, cause they're good questions, uh, and I mean that sincerely, uh, and I should've had those answers. Uh, now, we had a little break in the action, and, uh, I, I still support passage of this because we're just applying for the grant. But, uh, we do need to get some answers on a couple of things, I checked with Lehman, this is his first police grant that he's done, uh, he was not able to tell me specifically timing on this thing. So that's, uh, that is a, that's an important issue. It, it's more important now than it was when this thing was first introduced, I think we might all agree, uh, based on what's happened since, uh, in, in the interim, so, uh, in the country. So I still support passage, but I will tell you, I'll get the answers to those questions, I'll get those to you, and we'll find out what the timing in, in this is gonna be, and, and quite frankly, if it looks like it's gonna be an extended period of time, then we, we may decide, we, we may come back to you and say, let's, let's just, at least the additional numbers, so I appreciate the chance to have you to share that, thank you.
Thank you Paul, any other comments, questions? Alright, roll call please.
Hold up, Judy's got something.
Oh, yeah. Judy, I'm sorry.
I really think that that was great of you to check and to do the apology. That was really, that was good, thank you.
Thanks Judy.
I would, not necessary, but thank you.
Alright.
It was just a nice thing to do.
Alright, thanks, thank you Judy. Roll call please.
Well, I, did, Mr. Cotts, did you make a motion to approve?
I, I, I did.
And, and I'm sure I'm right.
I believe Terry seconded it.
Yes.
Thank you.
There was a second.
Thank you.
Alright Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Cotts? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, that passes seven to zero. Now we're gonna boot, move to our supplemental agenda. Excuse me, what, we have two first readings on? We're gonna start with, uh, twenty dash R dash thirty-two Kelly.
A resolution requesting that the city of New Franklin receive its share funds from the county COVID-nineteen local government payroll support grant program funds, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, we move to adopt or to waive the three readings on twenty R thirty-two.
Second.
You have a first and a second, roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Alright. Do we get a phone from Mr. Hawke?
We move to adopt resolution twenty R thirty-two.
Second.
You have a first and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero, move to, uh, our other first reading, our supplemental agenda, which is twenty dash R dash thirty-three Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to obtain four twenty-two paving, chip, and seal program services under the Summit County Engineers Bid, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This is assigned to the finance committee, we move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty R thirty-three.
Second.
You have a first and a second, roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to zero.
We move to adopt resolution. Did we adopt it or waive the three?
Yeah, you know what, I, I'm behind here a little bit, go ahead, I, no, I think that was for waiving it Jim, I'm apologizing. So we're going to adopt it now.
Alright, so we're moving to adopt resolution twenty R thirty-three.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Alright, that passes seven to the zero, thank you, that should take care of our legislation this evening, so we're gonna move into the mayor's report.
Alright, yes. Thank you, let's see, first of all, I want to, uh, publicly thank the Tudor House Garden Society and all the volunteers, the legion of people that turned out, uh, to help out at the Tudor House last Thursday, and the Beacon Journal was kind enough to pay attention to that, and, uh, it's nice to be on the front page of the second section and, and get some, uh, some free publicity. Uh, but, uh, Peter McDermott, uh, is one of our garden society experts, and, uh, and he and Maria Gray kinda led the thing, and, uh, he coordinated all the workers out there. Uh, Judy Williams, Dana Ash, and, uh, I'm gonna stop mentioning names, cause there were just so many, the scout troops, uh, but it was, it's just a really, really neat thing for people to show up and do that type of public, uh, get involved with a community project, uh, so, and it was just, and really nice that they got recognized in the paper. The playgrounds are open, as you know, the governor has done that, um, we were advised by Summit County, or by the Ohio Department of Health, to post signs saying that use at your own risk, and, and, uh, because up until the opening, if you were gonna open them, you had to have somebody there to clean them every two hours. Uh, we don't have the manpower, person power to do that, uh, so, uh, they, that instruction came from Columbus to post signs saying that, uh, uh, use at your own risk and, and, and confirming that we're not cleaning those on a regular basis, uh, no different than we ever did, we never cleaned them on a regular basis, so, uh, uh, that's, I know the, the, as a matter of fact, the, all the fencing, it got removed from, from grill before we could even get out there with the signs, so they were anxious to get on those playgrounds, uh, but I'm happy to be there. Um, uh, okay. The, uh, four-way stop is going in, the, the, the signs announcing that the four-way stop at Pearlman and Harder Home are in, I think, uh, I can't remember the effective date, June twenty-fifth or something like that. I did get a call from a gentleman who lives up that way, um, who's got a lot of experience, uh, he lives right at that intersection, and, uh, uh, and he had mixed emotions on it, uh, you know, he's concerned about this, you know, the stops and starts from the school buses, I, I sent something over to the school, but, but they never indicated to me they had any opposition to this. Uh, there is also the issue about whether or not a stop sign is, is, uh, appropriate to use to, uh, limit speed, uh, and, uh, but, uh, actually, in the conversation with the gentleman, it's, there's a lot of traffic at that intersection, a lot of people cut through Harder Home, particularly when schools open, they're trying to get to the ball field, so, uh, we still think it's a good thing, and, uh, and those, uh, the four-way, the, the stop signs will be up soon. Um, but there's been a similar request, as you know, on Vanderhoof, uh, at, uh, Kungle, uh, and they did radar there this week, well, actually, from Friday until Monday. And the numbers came back that the speed limit up, up there is, is forty, uh, ninety-eight percent of the vehicles were going fifty or less. Uh, seventy-one of them, percent of them were going to speed limit. Uh, I wish that was true everywhere. Uh, and, uh, so ninety-eight percent are in that range, uh, that no more than ten miles an hour. Uh, so, uh, and there were thirty-seven hundred and nineteen vehicles, so there's, it's pretty good sampling. Um, and, uh, again, I think at this stage of things, we'll revisit that four-way if and when, I wanna say when we get Kungle reopened, uh, but until then, uh, there's no intention of putting a four-way stop up there. Uh, still, uh, trying to come up with some different theories, that, there was some, some, I still don't know for sure that OPWC, Public Works, is not gonna make funds available, because, as you know, the governor's been back and forth. Uh, and he didn't wanna use the rainy day funds to patch the revenue loss, and now there's some, uh, there's been a push to suggest that he should do that. Uh, if he does that, some of these projects that went back burner might go back to front burner, so, uh, we're, we're gonna continue to do what we can to get that, uh, that bridge and that road opened. South Main Street, I told you, as you know, is happening, and the contracts have been signed, uh, and we expect that paving to be done, well, it'll be done before summer's over, uh, but, um, probably in the next thirty to sixty days. Uh, we got something from the county, and we'll post this, the fiscal officer at Westfield Bank have put together a program they call Fix-It Funds, uh, and, uh, loans from fi- five thousand to fifty thousand, interest rates two percent below the bank's normal rate, for home repairs, remodeling, property upgrades, code compliance. Under, they have the, uh, electrical systems, air conditioner, furnace, plumbing, carpentry, chimney, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I, I don't know if it applies to septic, quite frankly, uh, it can't be used for luxury items, we'll post this on our website and, uh, make everybody aware of it. The, uh, the county appraisers are now in New Franklin, uh, but they're only evaluating new construction or new additions, so, uh, they're out there and they're well-marked, and if you have any questions, give us a call. Uh, um, there is tax relief, the, the tax bills went out, as everybody knows, for the second half, they're due, uh, July, um, fifteenth. Um, and if you need more time, you can contact the fiscal office, we'll post that as well, they're not deferring the due date on those, uh, but they are going to permit people to pay those in installments, uh, between now and November, if, if that's helpful. So, uh, you know, if, if you need that relief, uh, check with them, and, uh, I did, as, as council knows, I checked with Donna Skoda from Summit County Public Health about the, uh, uh, when we can go back to public meetings, uh, and, and she confirmed that the, the ban was still on, but she expressed, uh, that she thought that that would be lifted by July first. Now that's our next scheduled meeting, and I know we're all really hoping that we can all be out in the committee room, uh, for that, and, uh, but, and if so, we'll prepare appropriately, and we'll, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but, uh, that's the latest news I have on that, and that's all I got.
Alright, thank you Paul. Uh, finance, Susan?
I wanna apologize ahead of time in case you hear a lot of loud noises in the background, cause everybody's out, all my kids are outside mowing the lawn, so, you hear a lot of background noise, that would be done. Um, we had the auditors in the office last week, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, had to pull a lot of stuff for them, which is par for the course, um, and things seem to be going pretty smoothly. Um, you should be looking at your, through your emails, because they'll usually send you that yearly questionnaire, so please check your emails and get that back to them, because that kinda holds up the audit as well. Um, GAAP is, uh, our GAAP report, it's- Um gap is, uh our gap report is to be done by the end of this month, so everything's kinda been been a little, the time has been a little bit of extended because of COVID, but uh we're getting everything accomplished, so we wanted to let you know about that. Um and uh we're working on, you know, getting, we've we've got the glass up now and we're working on getting the the office back to to some semblance of normalcy. It's gonna take us a little bit of time, but we're working on it, so um that's all I have at this time.
Alright, thank you Susan. Move into old business, any old business? Old business. About new business? Any new business? Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
No new business? Okay, we're gonna go into our public questions and answers on issues rated, raised at our meeting. I actually had a comment come in that I'm gonna read. Might wanna put some input on it. Says, "Now that more people are involved in these meetings and more involved in trying to make a difference within the community, can we discuss term li- term limits? I'd much rather talk about this when we can meet in person, but I think bringing it to something that definitely needs discussed." So that was just a comment that come in. I would like to make a comment on that if I can. I have no problem with term limits, but and I mean, back, way back in Judy will remember, Paul will remember, and I think that's everybody. Back in two thousand and four, I think there might've been fifteen, maybe sixteen candidates run for the seven spots. And then again, everybody knows, we ran two years later to get on that municipal election. I think it was down to thirteen. I ran for my ward council four times and only been opposed by one person on two of those occasions. Uh I mean, I'm I'm okay with term limits, but I'd still like to see some people coming out and running when we're having our elections. I mean, to shut somebody down, I I'm still happy to serve our community, but to have to just walk away and nobody has showed any interest, I guess I'd like to see maybe another election cycle and see how the turnout is for running for these spots. That's my opinion. Any other opinions?
I agree with you, sir.
It doesn't bother me, but there has to be somebody to take the place.
Exactly. I understand that.
I mean, I'd like to see an election cycle where we have two or three people running for our seats. You know, and I, there's no excuse, I mean, I'm not gonna say no excuse, but if if you you wanna do it, then get out there and run. I mean, I'll, the last two years, the last two elec- not two years, two elections is, there's no, you know, everybody has as good a chance as anybody else. You go out there and you got a chance. Put your hat in the ring, let's let's do this. Comments?
And if you need to know how, contact me, I'll tell you how, what you have to do, it's pretty easy.
Yeah. I haven't, I have, I've never had no problem with somebody wants to run, you know, I mean, but I I don't know what to say if nobody's running. And I, you know, I'm still running, Andy's still ru- everybody's still willing to go out there and serve the community to say, "No, you you can't do it anymore, even though you want to." I'm not sure I'm happy with that, but you know, I'd like to just see some people come out and and I think maybe this time we'll see this next election for the at-large seats, I think we'll see some people running. We'll see how it goes. That was my comment on our thing. Let me check, see if we got any other questions here. We gotta thank you for the comment on that uh comment, the comments on the comment. So, oh, I'm still gonna give it just a, about thirty seconds here for any other public questions. I don't think you do executive uh sessions on Zoom, do you Paul?
No, we don't have anything we need to talk about.
Alright. Well, it's good seeing everybody. I don't see anything coming in. Kelly, anything coming in?
No, I, I do not see any additional comments.
Alright, we'll give it just a little bit longer here. And if we get one, if somebody's getting one in late, just like if it comes up, I'll try to get back to you. Alrighty then, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As you have it, our next meeting will be July first, twenty twenty. That'll be a day before my fifty-fifth birthday, thank you. Think that's funny, no.
Hey, hey, everybody.
Alright, Paul, let us know what we're gonna do on this next one, okay?
I absolutely will. Alright, thanks folks.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.